Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 22 meeting of the School Board of the Dover Area School District. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, roll call.
Mrs. Britton.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Emmig.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mrs. Maylie.
Here.
Mr. Rohauser.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. First up is Presentations and Celebrations. I'll turn this over to Mrs. Kroom.
Okay. Our first group that we'd like to recognize that we're very excited are here with us tonight is the Dover High School Competition Cheer Team. They have accomplished many things this season and we want the Board to recognize them tonight. They were the YAAIAA League Champions, they were the District Three Champions, and they were a finalist for PIAA. So if we can give them a round of applause. And we would like to call them up individually if they would please come up as I call your name. Kara Becker. Brooke Burkheimer. Alexa Bergen Smith. Elizabeth Brandt. Victoria Brennan. Brooke Evans. Alyssa Gilman. Samira Howard. Brooke Johnson. Alexis Lippert. Kayla Lippert. Emily Marlowe. Ashley Mitchell. Lauren Mumma. Ashlyn Myers. Abby Reber. London Sayers. And Caitlin Staub. Did we get everybody? Good. All right. How about another round of applause? Real quick picture. like Shad Murphy to come up forward.
Is this one working now? Maybe? Sure. All right. So I had to promise our student representatives I wouldn't do the 45 minutes. I promised Shad. So we'll do this in the shorter form. So each year Prudential, which of you know is an insurance corporation and financial, they sponsor what's known as the Spirit of Community Awards. It's a national recognition for students who do exceptional community service beyond the norm. Each year thousands of students are nominated by their principals and their school communities for service they've committed. In this case, Shad has been recognized with the Prudential Spirit of Community Award Certificate of Excellence for Pennsylvania. That recognizes students who do, are in the top 10% of community service in the state and nationwide. So if you didn't know Shad's story, Shad has, with his family, raised over a half million dollars in the fight against cystic fibrosis by running golf tournaments, T-shirts, everything under the sun. And Shad has also not only done that but exemplified exceptional character in our school and our community. So it is my privilege to present him with his official certificate from the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards. I got a fancy one, too. But in addition to that, we received notice that Shad was also, due to his community service, recognized by the United States Government. Shad also is a recipient of the 2017 President's Volunteer Service Award, which is given out to individuals in the United States who exemplify high character and extreme community service. In addition to his certificate for that, he has also received a letter. You're getting a lot. If you can't read the signature at the bottom, it's kind of hard to read, it's big. But he received a letter from the President recognizing his service to the community as well. So here's your letter from President Trump, your certificate, and your other one. Congratulations, Shad.
This is a lot easier picture to frame.
That is awesome. I love seeing that. Next up, we have Mr. Stefanovic from the Township with an update for us.
That's a tough act to follow. I have a few things to share. Mostly some information on, I don't know if anybody's aware, we were informed this week that West Canal Road out close to, around here, close to Salmon Run is going to be closed April 2nd through, for three months.
Our Transportation Director's saying, "Yeah, we know it."
Okay. We just found this out, so I didn't know if anybody was interested in hearing that also. We were a little surprised that it was such close notice, but PennDOT does their thing and away they go. We are continuing with our Fox Run sewer replacement and also on the replacement in the Edgewood Park that I explained the last time, coming down past the current building and moving out through to the Fox Run area, which is also what your new school will be connected to. From the Township's standpoint, we have received bids for the building that we're working on and hopefully this coming Monday night, we will approve the building and bids for that to move forward. Part of that is replacing our underground fuel storage with an above ground, so if you see some construction going on over there right now, that's what's happening with us. On Monday night's agenda is the School Board project, so we'll begin to talk about that more and trying to help it move along a little quicker. The last meeting, we did distribute a set of plans to the Township supervisors so they could get familiar with that ahead of time. One last thing I had mentioned, we're going to be doing our comp plan update this year and it is an expensive job to get all that work done. So we did apply for a grant to help us with the expenses for that. And just today, Governor Wolf announced that there were 11 projects in Pennsylvania that were funded through municipal planning and shared services and ours was one of them. So that's going to move ahead, I'm sure now because getting that funding helps out. I did have one Charlie Rohauser volunteer to help with the comp plan and if anyone else in the school organization would like to assist with that and volunteer, we'd be happy. So we're hoping not to get too many people, but we're going to have a fair-sized group and there's a fair amount of work that we want to get done there. Is there any questions for me that I could help out with right now?
Thank you, Mr. Stefanovic.
Thank you.
Next, we have Crabtree Werborn Associates with a PlanCon F presentation.
So this isn't quite as exciting as the flyby, but try to make it brief. I know you have a lot on the agenda tonight. So everybody should have in front of them this document, the PlanCon F document. This is once again another step in the process. Currently, we're waiting on PDE's review and approval of part D and E, which you approved two months ago. They're a little bit behind on that, but we gave ourselves ample time for that. So the hope is to approve this part F at the next board meeting in April, should we have PD approval of D and E. So I'm just going to quickly walk you through it. Essentially, this is the last one you'll see up until we receive bids. So this will be the last one during design and it basically accounts for the construction document phase. So the first two pages are checklist of what's to be in here. A lot of this is repeat information. It's PD's last way of kind of doing an accounting on the building design. On page F03, once again, we look at the enrollment. One of the things we're going to try to do, enrollment has a direct impact on reimbursement in that it's a ratio that how much you're, either it goes by your current enrollment plus 10% or your highest projected enrollment per PDE projections, has a ratio on the amount you get reimbursed. PDE bases their projections based on live births and not on anything else. That's all they have to go by. So they tend to be low, so they're projecting at 993, your current, as your highest enrollment over the next 10 years. Your current enrollment is 985. So we already know that there's grade groupings that are going to put you well over that. So we're looking at submitting the district's own projections to help with that. If they do not, PD will have to accept that. If they don't, then we'll fall back to the current enrollment plus 10%. The next series of pages, whether you remember these or not, you saw them as part of the part A that was submitted a while back, a couple of years ago. It's basically a reaccounting of that now that we have a final, kind of a close to a final design. It's listing these room areas and these spaces that get capacity in PD's eyes, classrooms, things like that. You can kind of flip through those until you get to F13. Then F13, these are just some checks in PD's eyes, they want to make sure you're not building larger than you should be building per the, what they call the recommended FTE, and that's the number of students or the comparison on the ratio of classrooms. So they want to make sure you're not building the Taj Mahal, so this is just a check in that you're not overbuilding and of course that we pass that test. And then on the next page, this is what gets converted, your FTE to a RPC, Rated Pupil Capacity, and then that in turn later on gets factored into the amount of your reimbursement, but more just formulas that can be used way of calculating reimbursement. Then you can go to F16, that basically just is an overview of the systems in the building, whether you have electric, gas, things like that, just straightforward checklist. F17 lists documents that the Department of Education requires be part of your bidding documents that we always have in every project, so that just lists where they can be found within our project specifications. Not only, we'll have a series of drawings for the building, but we'll also have almost like a cookbook, an instruction manual, a bunch of different manuals that'll tell exactly all the detail in that and a lot of this happens in that front-end documentation, whether it be prevailing wages or different clauses that the state has. So flipping to the next page, these were actually, just appeared in the part E that was approved a couple of months ago. So this is grading to receive the building and portion of that is eligible for reimbursement. That's the only portion of the site. And the next page is sanitary sewer, so some of that is eligible for reimbursement. So that's just the method that they go about calculating that. And then on the back, the last page, F20, this is certification lieu of approval. So basically, we certify that our drawings and our documents are code compliant and meet all the regulations, both from the municipal standpoint but also from the International Building Code and things like that. And then at the bottom of this, this will be part of the part F approval document, but what PD wants to make sure is there's certain milestones that we've got to make sure we don't get ahead of ourselves. One of them is we cannot enter into contracts with a contractor until we have all those approvals in place. So this is a board resolution basically stating that the board will not enter into contracts with a contractor until those approvals take place. So talking how that relates to the schedule, so we're looking at the end of April or beginning of May to release bidding documents. So it'll be a short period of advertising in the paper. Any contractor that is able to get the bond will be able to pick up documents and bid on it. There'll be about a four-week period during the month of May where they'll have the opportunity to get pricing from subcontractors, put together their number, and towards the end of May or beginning of June is when we'll have receipt of bids. So in that month period is when PDE basically takes the part F document and our construction documents and does their review. So they'll do their review, make sure everything's in line, and then we cannot receive bids until they have given us the approval to do so. They don't actually approve part F at that time, but we cannot receive bids from contractors until they've reviewed this part F document in our documents. And we'll make sure we're communicating that very clearly and with the administration should we need to extend bids for any approval process or things like that. And then if everything goes according to plan, then once we receive bids, if the board votes the project through, then we'll be able to start working on contracts and that's when we'll make sure we tie up all our loose ends with any MPDS permits and things like that that we might have to have before we award bids. And the goal would be then to start construction beginning of July. So a lot of moving pieces and parts towards the end of the schedule that we'll keep an eye on and certainly if anything happens where we have to shift or react to it, we'll keep the administration involved. Any questions on the schedule? Or the part F document? Okay. For those who might not have been here earlier, these are just some renderings, still renderings of what we walked through before. So here's the cafeteria as we saw before, the gymnasium, and this will, of course, PowerPoint will be on the website that's allow everybody to see what we saw earlier. An auditorium and the auditorium. And these were here just in case we needed them, I don't know, we need to go back through them. So. Anyone have any questions for me in general up to this point on the project?
I have a question. I see on the document here is talk about removal of the tennis courts at the intermediate school. I don't know that that has ever been discussed, but is there any plans where those tennis courts, will there be tennis courts in, at the new building or will they be the existing ones that are currently down?
Yeah, the tennis courts will remain at your existing building. I think the tennis courts up there are, I think, abandoned and not really used. We're actually going to use those as a contractor laydown and staging area during construction and then at the end they'll be removed. But the decision early on with the committees, with your committees, was to leave the tennis courts at the existing high school.
Okay. The moment we've all been waiting for, Mrs. Benko with her budget presentation.
Scott, here's your. So first, I want to start out by thanking the administration, administrators at the district. We worked very hard on coming up with our preliminary numbers and the collaboration that happened over the past few months has been phenomenal. So just a shout out to everyone for thinking outside the box a little bit and working together. So for our preliminary budget for 2018-19, just keep in mind that this is the first preliminary budget that you will see for this year. Next month, then, we will come back and have you vote on the preliminary budget to put it out for a public inspection. So I want to start off, and I do every year, with the history of the district's financial As you all know, the past five years, we've been very fortunate to see some surpluses here at the district for our general fund, you know, ranging from $965,000 to last year's $2.8 million surplus. So 2017, when we talk about that $2.8 million surplus, I just want to remind you that that included some back payment of PlanCon monies that were due to the district and the state released those finally. So that revenue didn't really have much to do with last year's operations, but it was nice to receive and we took that $1 million and transferred it out to our capital projects fund so we could have monies to help offset millage increases for our new project. In 2018, our projected deficit is $2.1 million. When we passed the budget last year, we decided that we would utilize some of the funds that we put away for the piecer spike to bridge that deficit. Also, through the surplus of last year, we also added to those piecers committed funds and we can see that later on in the presentation, but it really helps us cover the deficit for this year. So our budgeting goals and objectives for the 2018-19 budget remain consistent with some of the goals and objectives we've had in the past. However, we've also added some things. So to start out with, all of the administrators and myself and Mrs. Kroom collaborated on our class sizes at the elementary levels and also at the secondary levels, too. So one of our biggest goals in this budget is to address the large class sizes currently at our elementary levels. We have some pretty high ones. We also wanted to make sure that we reevaluated every position upon resignation or retirement in order to effectively allocate our current resources and work toward achievement of the educational goals of the district. In doing so, we are also planning for staffing for the future possible realignment of buildings after the new high school is constructed. We continue to direct resources to educational programs and classrooms. We evaluated and we want to ensure proper funding is in place for the needs of the district's exceptional students. We continue to build and enhance technology supports for both staff and students, fostering a 21st century learning environment. We continued our site-based budget methodology that encourage a zero-based budgeting culture. So we start from the ground up, pretty much. And we also continue to manage and control fund balance levels for the general fund and also our capital projects fund to ensure proper funding for the construction of the new high school, the renovations for the existing high school, and transitions to the six to eight middle school. So whenever we started to talk about our class sizes and also in review of the project, we wanted to take a look at our enrollment and where our projections take us for the next few years. So this slide is just a snapshot of our 10-year enrollment projection that we have created here at the district. So as you can see, in 1718, we're at 3,546 students currently. 1819, 3,582. 1920, 3,621. And in 2021, it's projected to be 3,640. So between now and 2021, we're looking at an increase of almost 100 students. And the way we projected those incoming kindergarten classes is we took the average class size from 1718, which was 273 students, and just pulled that through to the next kindergarten classes for the next five years. So then we started to drill down a little bit on the class sizes and how our 1819 enrollment will impact our elementary staff and our class size policy. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Kroom and she's going to talk about our staffing models for this year and what we're going to need in next year.
Okay. So if you remember last summer, July, I think it was, we came to you and said, we had a couple of elementary classes that were just way, way too populated. And we had asked for three one-year elementary teachers to kind of fill those holes just for last year because it was so late in the summer. If you'll also remember, we had Dover Elementary Kindergarten, the class sizes were so large and we just didn't feel comfortable asking for a fourth teacher, that we asked for some aides and you generously gave each teacher a classroom aide. Well, kids have grown up and they're moving to the next year, so that's kind of where we're going to start. So the principals and I and Christina got together and Pat, we all got together and we have whiteboards for every single elementary building. And what we did is we put each grade level, each class size for this year, we moved them to next year, where are the teachers. We documented and put it out so we could see all four buildings and where were our class sizes. And we talked and we looked and we ranked and what I'm going to show you now are six elementary positions in order of what we think are the priority for a possible new teacher for next year. So first, if you take a look at North Salem Elementary in fifth grade, this year in fourth grade is where we had put one of those one-year teachers, or one of those one-year teachers.
Third grade was?
Yeah, fifth grade, but they were in fourth, oh yeah, they're in fifth grade this year. Okay. So currently, we had a third teacher there and that was one of the temporary teachers. So we were at class sizes of about 1819. So that's a temporary teacher. That teacher does not stay. So if we roll that class forward and only have two teachers, which are the permanent teachers, class sizes would be 38. Well, in fifth grade, that's not acceptable. So that's our number one recommendation, is we are recommending the addition of a fifth-grade teacher at North Salem. The second was Lybe Elementary, second grade. Currently, there are about 22, 23 kids per class. With moving the current first grade to second grade with just the three teachers in place would make class sizes approximately 27 and a half, almost 28 kids per class. Now, I want to remind you for second grade that the class size policy is 15 to 20 plus or minus 5. So we go over the policy right there at 26. Plus, you know, we want to talk about second grade and primary and that kind of size of class. So that's what is our second priority. Our third is Dover Elementary First Grade. This is where the kindergartens were last year that were so high that we put an aide in each classroom. As those kiddos move now to first grade, the class size would be, if we stay at three teachers, almost 26 students per student, again, over our class size policy and not really appropriate for first grade. So we are recommending a teacher here as well. Dover Elementary Third Grade, currently 23 class size. If we, when we bring the second grade up, we are now looking at a class size of 26. Again, in the class size policy, that takes us right at the, you know, right at the class size policy. So that's fourth on our priority list. Fifth is Weiglestown Elementary Third Grade. Currently, we're approximately 21 per class there, but bringing the second grade up, it brings us close to 25 per class. Now, again, that is at the upper end of the class size policy, but remember what I'm saying, we're ranking them. So we're trying to, we can't ask for 10, we could ask for 10 teachers, but we're trying to put them in order of where we really think the priorities are. And other than that very first suggestion, which the class sizes would be outrageous, we really do believe at K1, 2, and 3 is where the smaller class sizes would be. So this would be our fifth recommendation. And then sixth, Lybe's Fourth Grade. Currently, it's, although you see those class sizes, when we roll the third grade forward, if we stay at three teachers, we're at 26 and a half per class now. The class size policy goes up there. So the class size policy is 25 to 31. So while this is nice, this is why it's number six. We think 26 is still a lot, but it is within our class size policy. So those six are recommendations, right now, are recommendations of where we think we need elementary teachers. Now, we have two potential concerns. The two buildings that seem to have high kindergartens coming in over the last couple of years, the trend has been higher. So first, we have a concern at Dover, that's where the large kindergarten was last year. If we follow the same trend, which we're thinking we may, the class size would be approximately 23 students per class for kindergarten. While that is in our class size policy, we think that's a pretty big kindergarten class. And then the same thing at Lybe, which I think is one student higher, again, the class size for kindergarten. While that is in our class size policy, we think that's a pretty big kindergarten class. And then the same thing at Lybe, which I think is one student higher. Again, the class size for kindergarten there, if they are following their trends, will be 24, again. So we showed you our top six, but then we showed you just kindergarten because we don't know what's going to happen with kindergarten, all right? Go ahead, Jen. So what we are recommending is we would like to hire six additional teachers, one to be funded through Title II, so the district budget would pick up the five. And we would, those five, we would probably go with the first four on that list and hold, or the first, yeah, the first four on that list and hold tight on those last two. Because remember, we won't know kindergarten probably until July, by the time everyone does register. So that's what we're asking for right now, five additional teachers in our budget and then one funded by Title II. And additionally, we are suggesting that we reduce three temporary building aides that we originally hired for kindergarten because we want to put a teacher there. So we would pull those aides back out of the mix. Okay? Okay. Come on up, Jared.
Are we standing side by side?
Yes, we are. Okay. Okay. Due to the retirement of a CTE teacher, and this was what we talked about a little bit, is really because we are asking for new teachers, it's really important that we reevaluate every single staff member who chooses to retire or to resign, to make sure that at this point they fit into the program. Our priorities are absolutely student achievement, so that's, you're going to see that theme through the whole thing. So we have a retirement of a CTE teacher at the high school. The CTE classes and schedules are, the class sizes are a little lower and Jared's able to reevaluate their schedule and work with that. With that retirement, we are looking at hiring another Spanish teacher. Our Spanish classes are exceedingly high. May talk.
Well, then. I'm going to start back at the other point. So one piece that also goes into the CTE there is that our graduation requirements are currently expiring for the current class. Next year's seniors are the last group on the current grad requirements. The group below them is the next set, where we had a reduction in two courses, one of which was the personal finance, financial literacy, the other one was career portfolio. So those two courses took up a bulk of the CTE staffing load in business, which is now going to allow us some freedom to let business go back and start teaching some of those other courses that have been comboed. As long as engineering is in there as well, we have the same concern. Next year, we're looking at potentially five credits within our engineering program and right now, we have 12 credits of availability in staffing. So by reducing that position down, we can still easily meet the needs of the engineering program, but we can also allocate those other courses out within our CTE department. In terms of the Spanish position, two years ago, a world language position was eliminated from the high school and there was no replacement. Since that time, our Spanish numbers have grown increasingly fast. The state actually requires that every high school has to have at least two world language programs that are planned and in curriculum. It also requires that at least one of those goes through at least four years of that program. If we do not have another Spanish teacher, next year, given our numbers, we would be potentially unable to offer our 4th and 5th level in Spanish, which would fall below the Pennsylvania code requirement. At this time, we have a teacher teaching a half course, or a half-load of French, half of Spanish. For comparison, this year, we are offering 15 sections of Spanish in our building at a class size average of 31 to 32. If you've ever taken a world language, taking a world language requires a lot of interaction with the instructor. We actually have desks that are up against the doorway, so when you walk in, you have to walk around kids to get into the class because we did not have the staffing to support additional courses or additional sections. By offering next year, we can lower class size down to around 24 to 26 per Spanish class. We can actually offer, for the first time in several years, Spanish 4 and Spanish 5 as individual sections, both of which have numbers above 15 students requesting them. So we'd have full sections of our upper-level language as well. But having that additional Spanish teacher would allow us to offer 18 credits of Spanish in our building or potentially more, whereas right now, I'm limited to at least, or at max, 15. And given next year's number, 15 will not cover us, we'd be looking at class size averages of 36 to 37 in those courses. Did I do okay? Thanks.
All right, our intermediate school restructuring. We have a retirement of a phys ed teacher and we are proposing that at this point, we do not replace this phys ed teacher. And the, both Victoria and Terrier are looking at completely revamping the schedule at the IS next year. So they are looking at how that's going to work and they feel they can absolutely do this without a third phys ed teacher. So we have looked at the needs and, you know, we've talked about achievement at the intermediate school and there are a core group of students who are struggling and are in between our core content, learning support, some behavior issues. So what we're proposing is that we replace that position with an intervention specialist. This would be a professional staff, this would be a teacher. We would assign students there who need help in the regular classroom. We would assign students there who are struggling possibly with behavior. We would assign students there who might be coming from another district or from possibly an outside placement. Kathy in a minute is going to share with you some of our special education numbers, so we could definitely use that support. So Victoria, do you want to come up and talk about the position, please?
So looking at future, so in two years, we're going to be moving to the high school and have a much larger facility. And at that time, we're not going to have a swimming pool. So looking to try to make some needs and looking at the needs of our district right now and of the middle school. I have a real need for an interventionist. There are students, as Mrs. Kroom said, who really struggle. They can't make it in the academic program. They need a little bit more of a more nurturing environment, building relationships, helping them get refocused in their academics or behavior, or it could be both. Helping them in there, moving them out into the classrooms where they can meet with success and if they start to falter, we can pull them back in and give them the support that they need. So we're talking about regular ed students who a lot of times don't have that extra support. That's not to say that some children who are special ed as well could not benefit from this program. But we have a group of students who really make it difficult for other children to learn in the regular ed classroom. And in this program, we can work on behavioral needs as well as academic needs. Our PE program, health program, will not suffer at all. Our students will be able to have the PE, they'll be able to have health, they'll just have it with two instructors instead of three. So I see this as a much-needed program, especially for those students who are struggling, who need that extra support and staff. This is a position that I had in my previous district and it worked really well for those students. Thank you.
So getting to get, we got all the elementary teachers and Christina and I, we got together and again, we have a resignation in the music department in one of the buildings. So in talking about, as we look forward to the realignment of the elementary schools and what will we need in some of our specialists, we discussed that we could absolutely continue the current program as is if we do not replace that position at this point. And what we talked about is that if you look at all the teachers, while they're all certified in music, they all have their specialty and what they like to do. What we think we can do is have one teacher per two buildings to teach general music and choral, three days each building cycle, which is what they get now, and one teacher to teach instrumentals. And this continues our philosophy of allowing the teachers to work with multiple buildings, so we have equitable activities in all of the buildings. We've worked really hard so that students in Lybe have a similar experience as students in North Salem when it comes to their music, when it comes to their music education. So this is something that we've talked about and we think we can do. Troy, did you want to come up and talk a little bit about this?
Thank you. But you just said everything I was going to say. That's okay. You just read it. Yeah, absolutely. Certainly, well, music was a big part of my schooling and I played the trumpet. I don't know if anybody saw me play that in our program we did over at Lab the other month. So I certainly see the value in the music education and in keeping that going forward. I also see the consistency that we'd like to have for the quality of the programs that we have. And currently, as Mrs. Kroom said, we do have our general ed music teachers, even though they are certified to teach general music, they have had a specialty that they focused on throughout their education. And we are taxing them to the max by requiring or asking them, even though they're assigned to one building, but to teach choral, general music, and instrumental, all to all 500-plus children, it could be challenging. So we're looking at taking the skill sets that they have, and they do currently teach three, of our six-day cycle, three days of general music class to our classes kindergarten through 6th grade. And then the other three days of our cycles is when they try to get together for instrumental lessons for 4th grade, 5th grade, and 6th grade sectionals, and also do their ensemble practices for 5th grade, 6th grade, choral, and instrumental. And that has resulted, and when we did that, that did result in some challenges over the years where we tried at first to do some combined band performances at the high school for 5th and 6th grade. Some of the challenges with that certainly were the fact that we had four different music instructors kind of thrown into that who hadn't been doing instrumental instruction for years, if at all, in their music positions, but trying to get that consistent. And they did the best that they could and those performances were wonderful. Again, anybody, any students or children who are performing for us, we find the best in all of that. But we do, did find that that was inconsistent with some of the skill sets that they had and also the number of students that the instrumental instructors were able to bring from each different building, that varied dramatically as well. So as Mrs. Kroom said, as we're looking forward to the future and possible staffing needs, depending on what our configuration might look like, if we end up doing any kind of primary buildings and then an intermediate-level building, elementary concept, where we don't have the ensemble or the instrumental lessons necessary for, say, our kindergarten 1st and 2nd grades, if that would be, I know that's something that's being considered for our configurations, we wouldn't want to have to realign or look for possible furloughing of teachers at that time if our programs at that time didn't necessitate all of those staffing needs. So we were looking at an opportunity where we have a natural break in through this resignation to see if this is a better way that we could reconfigure the staffing, continue the great programming that we're doing, maybe even make it better by having some consistency through the music instruction, by the limited number of staff members becoming more familiar with the different buildings and the different building student needs. I think we're looking at also going back to having some centralized performances at the high school because that's just a much nicer venue, even at our current high school, than what we are doing at our elementary and certainly with our brand-new building and those facilities, I'm sure will be a fabulous experience. So we're looking, trying to be smart about our current staffing and here's a natural break that actually, we considered the change or the conversation based on the fact that this resignation was occurring. So that's what precipitated the conversation to see, is this a way that we could look at a programming change, maybe even better the programming?
All right, so in summary, what we are looking at at the elementary is hiring an additional six teachers to support the class size reduction that we talked about. That elementary resignation allows us to look at restructuring the music instruction and what that saves us at that amount would help with those elementary hiring of those elementary teachers. The IS swapping a retired phys ed teacher for an intervention specialist and you'll see there's no effect money-wise at all there. The high school swapping the retired CTE for Spanish, again, no effect on the budget. And then the three other things, just to kind of remind you, is right now, the contractual agreement with the professional staff is 2.9%, so that is complying with that percentage. A reminder that when we approved a couple, or a month ago, the realignment of the administration and we did reduce one instructional advisor from an administrator down to the professional level, so that removed one administrator. But the other thing that we are proposing is that we take the high school dean of students and we eliminate that and replace it with an additional assistant principal. I do want Mr. Wassler to talk about that, but this really came out of our discussion about school safety and the role of an assistant principal versus a dean, especially at the high school level. Because a dean at the high school level is really very limited in what they can do. So Jared, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Just from a numbers comparison, our high school is the eighth-largest high school in York County out of 14. And we are the only high school that still has a dean of students. If you look at all the other high schools, they all have a minimum of two assistant principals and one principal, there is no dean. The only school that has only one assistant principal to support the building is Hanover High School, which has half our enrollment. And they have additional staff in the building as well to support that. So our administrative alignment doesn't really work for the number of students we have. My role as a principal is to primarily serve as an instructional leader, so is Mrs. Shelley's role. And when we're dealing with 1,000 students a day, plus the 100 teachers, most of her role falls straight into discipline. Our dean of students is actually, by job description, designed to be only a disciplinarian. Unlike the middle school and elementary schools, they are not interventionists. So our dean of students is under a teacher contract, can only perform one function, which is providing discipline to kids. That dean of students cannot suspend. That dean of students cannot apply discipline beyond a tier-one level. That dean of students cannot have certain interactions because of the level of the discipline offense. So the position is incredibly, incredibly limiting, particularly considering what we deal with. So anything that elevates above a low-level disciplinary concern, such as a student tardy to school, tardy to class, student cutting class, automatically falls into the lap of our assistant principal, which greatly reduces her amount of time to provide services to our students. From a safety standpoint, our dean can also only be involved in a limited capacity for safety conversations because of confidentiality. So the ability to shift that to an assistant principal position, one, allows us to give our assistant principals the responsibilities as an instructional leader as well. It also allows us to get discipline back in a way in which it's no longer supported in a tiered structure. It can be supported in a more direct structure. It also allows us, from a safety perspective, to have three individuals who are able at any given point in time to take command of the high school should there be a security issue we have to address. And it also puts us in line with what you will see nationally. Typically, around 300 students per administrator is the recommendation in most states. Right now, we have one administrator per roughly 500 students in our building. So that position recommendation came from us looking at how can we restructure that position to further support our students, further support our programs, but also to make sure that we're providing the most safe and secure environment for our students.
And one other thing that I'd like to point out about the organizational restructure that we approved last month is the director of special ed, Mrs. Guyer. Her, and she's going to talk in a minute and she's going to share with you our special ed program, is we are pulling away a number of things from that department. So for example, Mrs. Strasbaugh, right now, is in charge of alternative ed at the high school. That is a tremendously large job. We are pulling that away from her and an assistant principal from the high school is going to take that over. And the reason for that is because that alternative ed program is housed at the high school and needs to be part of the high school program. And when we show you some of our special ed programming and our needs, we truly need Mrs. Strasbaugh and Mrs. Guyer to really focus on special ed. And so you're going to see that in a minute. So what we are proposing is to add five additional professional staff members in next year's budget.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
At the elementary level, with the additional six teachers that are coming up there, I'm assuming that there would be no teachers in any other grades that could be pulled to meet that bubble that's coming up in that.
What we, yes, yep, we did that, yes, and yes, that I think we realize that that is possible, that there are a few we can, that we're going to have to realign.
So there's two, so there's two grades in two different buildings that actually can go from four teachers to three teachers based on incoming classroom sizes. So out of the six, two could potentially be pulled from other, they're not really.
So you're saying out of those six, there's a possibility we would only have to hire four? Is that correct?
If you were just looking at the six, if you were just looking at the six, yes, you are correct. That there's two teachers that will be reduced because of a bubble coming out and then we need six new teachers.
Additionally, we took them into account when we, like I said, we had the boards and we had where are their, where are class sizes lower? And we took all that into account. Again, remember, we put three one-year teachers in last year and probably could have put five in. Well, we know we could have. We definitely could have put four because we didn't put any in that kindergarten, we put the aides there. And there are still, if you talk to any of the elementary teachers, we still have some class sizes. And even those six we showed you, there are still some class sizes larger than we like.
Is there any space issues then? Like, I know Lybe's had a space issue.
Yep, we've had that conversation as well and this was, that was, it was a great conversation because we said that. So Lybe, you get more teachers, where are you putting them? Yeah, we can find the space. It'll be tight, but we can absolutely find the space.
One final question, if I'm right. The music teacher restructuring. A few years ago, we had, sort of went down that same path with not replacing a teacher when they retired. And at that point in time, the consensus was, one person can't cover all multiple buildings like that. What's changed now versus then and how is that going to, how is that going to work? Is the current staffing involved in those plans? Is, is the current staffing involved in those plans? Do they, are they part of that discussion?
We have not had this discussion with them, we've had it with the four building principals who, who schedule all of those teachers and know the class sizes and feel that they can do it. I, I don't know the reasoning a couple of years ago behind that or why that was done, but the principals, they're pretty confident that they could do this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're gonna talk about, sorry.
We thought that was fun.
So, we're gonna talk about special ed education and the impact on the district's budget. So, Mrs. Guyer is gonna give you a program overview of programs we have in district and out of district.
All right, yeah, this is the Fast and Furious, because this is something we could talk about, you know, for days. We currently have three programs that we own. These are our teachers, all of our students in our district. Learning support is something that we've always had in our district. Learning support is K-12, and learning support are, is for those students who really can make it in the regular education classroom with supports and services by teachers or paraprofessionals, okay? They can do the regular ed curriculum, they just need some good accommodations and modifications in order to be successful. We currently have 18 teachers K to 12, as well as 20 full-time and seven part-time staff members to support that. That looks a little different in the levels, because at the elementary level, those support staff, what they're doing is they're actually working either within the regular education classroom to support those students, or they might be pulling them out to do some interventions, a very targeted intervention where they've been trained to do that with the students. When you get to the secondary level, those support staff, what they're doing is they're actually spending the majority of their time in the regular education classroom, because our teachers are just too spread out trying to cover all of the kids. So, that's really what learning support looks like. The seven-to-one student-to-staff ratio is a little bit deceiving because of the fact that, while that's what the numbers say, the reality is, is that those kids truly are spread out all over the buildings. At the elementary level, some teachers are covering three and four grade levels. Okay, so let's talk about autistic support. So, three years ago, the district decided to bring back the autistic support program, and this is a very daunting undertaking because it wasn't planned for, I'm gonna be quite honest with you. And this is one of the most difficult, if not the most difficult, program to bring back because it requires extensive training of your staff members. We only brought back the first three, or three classrooms within the elementary level, simply because we didn't have a need for secondary autistic support. We don't have that many students who need this. And people think, why do we need certain classes just for students with autism? Autism is a spectrum. So, you have students who are extremely high-functioning, and you wouldn't even know they have autism. In fact, the majority of our students who have autism in our district are not in those classes. They are in the regular education classes, receiving absolutely no accommodations, not even 504 plans. These particular students are students who are coming in with basically no language skills. Language does not make sense to them. Pencil, it's nothing to some of our students. Developmentally, some of our students are coming in as kindergartners, as 18-month-olds. So, think what an 18-month-old has when it comes to language skills. I'm thinking about my granddaughter, for example. She's just learning language. Those are our kindergartners, those are some of our first second graders. So, you can see, this is why, if you look at it, it looks 22 students, three staff members, and look at all those support staff. Now, I'll let you know, right now, we are working to reduce the support staff for a variety of reasons. But, in, according to PDE, you could only have eight students in a classroom for autistic support. So, therefore, the numbers are going to be lower because we're not allowed to go any higher than eight. And so, right now, you look, we have 22 students, we only have room for two more. Now, just so you know, we've already looked at the numbers, and I know what we're getting for next year, we have one student moving out, we have another student moving into kindergarten, so we're gonna be fine for next year with a little bit of wiggle room. But, this is a class where we've been very fortunate, because what we did is when we chose to bring back these programs, we also enlisted the help of Patton at the state level, that's for special education, and they actually spend a great deal of time in our classrooms. They're down in our classrooms once a month, that, and they're training and supporting. And the nice thing about it, too, is it's free. So, we're getting free support, we're getting free materials from, from, from Patton. The last group of students here are our life skills support students. Typically, students in these classes are students with intellectual disabilities, formerly known as mental retardation. These are students who, for some, might be autistic as well, some of our students are comorbid, which means they have multiple diagnoses, and are able to fit into this classroom, because they are not only cognitively a bit lower than the norm, they also are functionally lower than the norm. So, in order to be in that class, you really have to have those two things going on. These classes are also monitored by class size. So, at the elementary level, you can have no more than 12 students in a class, at the secondary, it's 15. That obviously plays into how many students we can have in a classroom and how many teachers we need. Right now, we have two life skills classrooms at North Salem, we have one at the intermediate school, and one at the high school. Where our numbers are actually going to increase at the high school next year because of move-ups, but we also have some students that were in alternate placements outside of our district because that's where that was more appropriate, but now we're discovering that life skills is more important, so we're bringing them back to the district, which is great. You can see the ratio there, because once again, these are students that require completely different programming. Even though we do have students, we're doing some great things at North Salem and at the high school with bridging the gap between regular ed and special education, they still need people that are highly trained in how to work with students. Some of our students do require one-on-one, some can work two-on-one, some can work in small groups, the ranges are very different. But, those are the programs right now that we currently have in district. Mrs. Herman had asked me last week, have we seen any cost savings? Because that was a big thing, and that was a push, we're gonna save all this money. I ran the numbers yesterday, and if we had autistic support and life skills being serviced by the IU this year, we would be paying $1.8 million. We're saving more than, it's like $700,000 by not having them in, out in the IU program. So, yes, we are, did the numbers for you. So, this is what we have in-house, but let's talk about what we have out, outside right now. And this plays right into what Mrs. Gross was saying about the need for some other level of intervention. Look at our numbers and emotional support. And, to be quite honest, what's really been great this year is having Kirsten Johnson with us now, because she kind of supports this. Our kids are coming into us with so much baggage that we, as a district, as educational professionals, in fact, are not ready to handle. We can't handle it. We've had several students this year who've moved into our district who've never even come to one of our buildings, because they were already in some type of alternate setting because of behavior. We have seen a huge increase in the need for emotional support this year. So, when you look at these numbers, you're gonna see 47 students who are in outside placements or in intermediate unit classes. What you need to understand, too, though, is those emotional support classes are not just those IU classes. We have students that are in residential facilities because of behaviors, because of mental health needs, that we cannot provide support for even in an IU class. You're also going to notice that we have up here, just to skip, vote tech and go back, therapeutic emotional support. Those are for students that at this point in time, we need to choose mental health and behavioral health over academics. So, those classes are much smaller, and you have a, a full-time teacher in there, a full-time counselor, two full-time support staff members, which of course is gonna jack up your costs when you're talking about the number of students. We've had several of our students this year who, in working with Mrs., Mrs. Johnson, have found that we have truly needed a great, greater level of support, and we've had to move more of our students into this level. That does not mean they stay there, because the goal is always to be in a regular school setting with, in the regular education environment as much as possible. To go back to vote tech, most people don't realize that we actually pay an additional amount of money to vote tech if a student is labeled a special education. So, therefore, you pay what you normally pay for vote tech, but then you also pay an additional fee for all of those students. We currently have 21 students who have IEPs at vote tech. And within the next month, we'll be having meetings and we'll be getting the finalized numbers for those. I believe we have six graduating and maybe eight that have, I, I don't know, I haven't gotten the numbers. Have you gotten them yet? Maybe not, maybe the school counselors have, as far as who has been accepted to vote tech. We'll be having the, those numbers. Neurological support is full-time learning support. Those are students who, most of us, when we were in school, that's the resource room, that's where students spent their time. They never really came out for anything except maybe specials. Neurological support is for those students who are kind of on that border between learning support and life skills, but we're not quite ready to make that jump yet because they're functionally higher. So, we don't have, we don't have the personnel to support that right now, but we're being creative, because we always want to bring our kids back. MDS classes, those are for students who might have physical disabilities, as well as cognitive disabilities, functional disabilities, all those kinds of things in one class. Those are typically, they are outsourced to either the IU or center-based programs. I mentioned that we didn't have enough numbers to bring back autistic support secondary, that's why. So, we already have three right now. One of those students is actually coming into our life skills class for next year at the high school, so we're excited about that, get to visit him tomorrow. Uh, we have two visual support, two deaf and hard-of-hearing, one dual diagnosis, that is intellectual disability and emotional disability at the same time, and then we have one student who is deaf-blind. So, all of these classes are ones who are, are outside of our district because we just don't have the programs to support them right now, we don't have the teachers, we also don't have the facilities to support our needs. But we're always looking for creative ways, so I'm excited with what Mrs. Gross is actually proposing, because we have some students, and I truly believe if we could actually just intervene earlier for those students, they probably would not have to go the route of needing an IEP. So, that's where we are right now, program-wise.
Okay, so now we're gonna talk a little bit about, and hopefully Kathy can chime in on some of this, too, because I'm definitely not an expert at, at some of these classes that we have outside the district. So, we're gonna talk about the special education budget and the financial analysis of some of the costs that are occurring at the intermediate unit, for some of the classes that she spoke about, and also the outside placement. Actually, we're just gonna focus on the IU. Okay. So, this slide may look a little crazy, however, what I'm trying to show, trying to show, there we go. What I'm trying to show you here is how we get billed and pay for our Schedule A services at the intermediate unit. Could you just circle back to what those Schedule A services include?
Sure. So--
Quickly.
Everything that we just saw on the last slide are programs that we pay for, pay the IU to. So, when we get a Schedule A, what it does is it takes each of the students who are in those programs and configures a cost based on teachers, paraprofessionals, programming, those kinds of things, and then they send us an estimated cost of what it's going to be for each of those classes.
And, and the thing to note about that is, the only thing we control in those costs are the number of students that we have there, and even that is sometimes beyond our control. So, this, the way we get billed for, for these Schedule A services is in July, we receive an original Schedule A, which is pretty much an estimate of what our costs are gonna be through the next year for these services. In February, then, we received a revised Schedule A, which is the actual cost up to that point, plus the estimated cost for the rest of the year. And then, in October of the following year, we received the final Schedule A, which was a reconciliation of the entire year and how many kids were in those classes, and the cost per ADM for those classes. So, what happens then, in February, is when we receive that revised Schedule A, so, we received this at the end of February and use this for our budget, so, we had a very short time period to put the Schedule, Schedule, Schedule A budget into place. We use that Schedule A to then budget for the next year. So, what I want to show you here is, in 2015-16, when we received the Schedule A, the revised Schedule A in February, we utilized that to then do the budgeting for 2016-17. You'll see an increase of almost $300,000 in the budget process there of 7.97%. When we received the final Schedule A costs for that 16-17 year, it was actually $3 million instead of 2.9. So, we were under budget by $100,000, and this was because of costs and changes to either ADMs, or changes into the average cost per ADM, which takes into consideration which teachers are teaching those classes, and also their benefits and things like that. And then, if you look at 16-17, so when we were budgeting for 17-18, we received our revised Schedule A, and that cost was $3.1 million. We did a 6.89% increase in that budget to about $3.4 million. Right now, based on that revised Schedule A, it came in at $3.7 million, a $400,000 difference from the, from the Schedule A that we budgeted off of. And, in 17-18 now, we are budgeting a 10% increase, just because, you know, we realized that we were off on that Schedule A budget for 17-18. So, now we are budgeting a 10.7% increase to this year's Schedule A. So, when we budget, when we look at that Schedule A for budgeting purposes, we not only evaluate the rate changes, but we also evaluate the students coming and going. Kathy is very good at knowing which students are where, who's coming, who's going, who's graduating, who's being placed somewhere else. So, we take a line item-by-line item approach, and student-by-student approach when we look at some of these budget numbers. What we did this year to get to that $4.1 million is we budgeted the change from the original Schedule A in July to the revised Schedule A that we got in February, and we budgeted that percentage change up, up to next year. So, hopefully, we'll be a little bit more on next year. There's, there's just no way to know the cost per ADM. We have costs per ADM sometimes increasing 69% whenever we get our Schedule As. And I, we sat with Mr. DeSho last week, or a couple of weeks ago, and, and showed him line by line, hey, this, this one's increasing 69%, how can I seriously budget a 69% increase in, in cost? So, those are some of our struggles that we have with the intermediate unit, the way they bill, the way they are charging out their ADMs. I will say, and, and we've talked about, they are taking a look at all their processes and procedures, and the way they're billing. One change that is coming from the intermediate unit is they are now going to take all their medical costs and allocate them across all their programs. So, if we have an autistic high school teacher that has full student benefits, and Northeastern has one that has single benefits, we're not taking the full hit for those full family benefits. So, those will be spread across all of the districts. Another thing that happens at the IU is whenever students pull out, or whenever schools pull students out or pull programs out, we then get allocated those costs from those programs. There is no way for us to project that. So, again, some of our struggles. I also want to share in this, these are the outside, other services provided by the IU. We have Bridges, which is outpatient psych services, Lions Pride, which is intensive emotional sport, support, and also Paradise Academy, which is also intensive emotional support. If you take a look at the Lions Pride line, line item, you will see last year, our costs were at $125,000 for six students in that class, and now we are looking at double that number of students, is it three? Is it, I make a mistake there?
No, you're fine.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to mention that last year, the decision was made to pull out of River Rock Elementary Schools. So, what's happening now is those students have to go somewhere, and this is where they're going, because we have students who are unable to perform the way we need them to. We have some students who have had some disciplinary measures taken against them, and they cannot remain in their regular school setting. So, therefore, this is where they're going instead of River Rock, and that actually accounts for three of the six students that we have there right now.
And I think at the time we were doing budgeting, when we were budgeting for the Lions Pride last year, we, I guess it was the expectation that those students were gonna be able to come back to our buildings from River Rock--
Which they did.
--which they did, however, it did not work out, and therefore, we're seeing our costs double. So, we just received our invoice, mid-year invoice for those services, so it's at $232,000, and I budgeted $125.
They're different students, by the way, the ones who came back from River Rock are being very successful.
Oh, good, I apologize.
Really different students.
So, those are just some of the struggles we have. I wanted to share, I mean, you're looking at a difference of, you know, $600,000 in Schedule-- $600,000 in Schedule A services. And we didn't, we didn't send back a large amount of students. The students that we sent to the IU are emotional support students, which come at a cost of about $33,000, I believe.
Test is at $45,000 per student right now.
Okay. So I just, we just wanted to share those budgeting issues that we have. And there, you're going to see a high increase, obviously, 10.7% in IU services, and that is why. And so when we look back, when I took this schedule and I looked back to the year before, we took back the autistic classes, the autistic and learning support, right?
Life skills.
Life skills, I apologize. I take a look back to what we were spending at the IU then, and it was $4.1 million. We're right back to that $4.1 million we're sending to the IU every year. So I just wanted to have that presentation for informational purposes only. Any questions? Okay. So now we're going to cover support, confidential staff, budget components, some restructures there. When I met with some of the administrators that handle support staff, we met, I met with Dave Nelson, and we talked a little bit about how our custodial services were going. As you might remember, last year in the budget, we did eliminate one head custodian and restructure that process a little bit. Because of some leaves of absence for this year, that process didn't quite work out, and we were lacking on some custodial services. So I'm going to let Dave talk a little bit about what we're proposing. We're proposing a, the addition of a custodial supervisor for our second shift. And that person would be under confidential staff, similar to the maintenance supervisor that we have now, that manages that angle of it.
Okay. So currently, we have one head custodian at the intermediate school, one at the high school, one at this building, and then we have one that covers two, one at North Salem and one that covers two buildings. The one that covers two buildings struggles because if he's in one building, there's nobody to watch the hen house while, you know, the head hens away. So it's not working out as well as we thought it would. Without somebody over the entire custodial staff at night, it's tough to monitor what they do and how they do it. So custodial supervisor would allow us to make sure everybody is cleaning the exact same way, do a lot more training of that custodial staff in monitoring what they do, bring everybody kind of onto the same page. I think if you talk to principals that have had different head custodians, they're the first ones to tell you, well, so-and-so cleaned this way, and then this guy came in and they don't do it anyway, even close to the way the other one did. So it would kind of get us on the same page. We tried to create, well, we did create, since we tried, a custodial manual that covers everything from how you act to how you address people, to how you clean and what you clean with, and when you clean, and different products, which has helped. But we just need to get to that next level. You know, I wish I could be here all day and all night, but it's, you know, 16-hour days get old after a while. So that would help us get to more, what I want to call more even clean throughout the district, so all buildings are getting the same services.
Okay. And behind each of these recommendations is the cost for the recommendation. Please keep in mind that a lot of these recommendations are, you know, for, that impact full-time staff have benefits attached to them. And when we budget the benefits for staff that we don't currently have on, a lot of times we'll take family benefits into consideration when budgeting. Sometimes we do two-party, depends on how many positions that we are looking at. Again, as Tracy mentioned in her presentation of the professional staff, we are looking at the reduction of the three temporary building aides that were put into place to review class sizes in the kindergarten to, and we will be adding the teachers. We are looking, and through, through the restructure that you had, the administrative restructure that you had approved last month, this is the addition of the one full-time support staff to support central registration, and also enhance our medical access billing, ultimately increasing our subsidy. Currently, Mrs. Feringer, who is on the agenda, I believe, this month to be the Assistant Superintendent Secretary, handles our access billing, and she does a phenomenal job. However, with her new duties as the Assistant Superintendent Secretary, we will need someone to take over those duties. However, this position allows for an extra set of eyes to review the access billing and make sure the numbers are right. And two eyes are, two sets of eyes are better than one. So she will be teaching that full-time support staff her, the ways that she bills medical access. We also hope that we will start to be able to bill for transportation through medical access. We haven't been doing that. Mrs. Feringer just did not have enough time with some other duties that she had assigned to her through special ed or alt-ed. So hopefully, that person will be helping with that, increasing our subsidy. That person will also serve as a support to our central registration coordinator and help monitor central registration as it comes back centrally. Also, we were talking about, we met with the principals on this and collaborated a little bit. And with increased technologies here at the district, we believe that we can do an elimination of the current floating library secretary. That secretary currently visits all four elementary buildings and is at each elementary approximately one and a half days per cycle. I'm not sure which administrator was going to talk about that, so, thank you.
Not a problem.
So like Jen said, we do have a library, a floating library secretary. She visits each elementary building 1.5 days out of a six-day cycle. One of the responsibilities is usually coding and categorizing books. Thank, we're thankful for the board for purchasing the Destiny software program. That actually helps with that task. Another responsibility that that individual does is completes purchase orders for the library needs. Through the use of Skyward and our new financial Skyward program, those requisitions now come to building principals for approval. So we believe as an elementary school team that we can absorb those responsibilities within.
We are also looking at a restructure of our secretarial staff, including the addition of a part-time 10-month secretary to Library Elementary to address security concerns, and also to handle some of the workload. Our current secretary over at Lab is awesome, and she's a one-person show, but unfortunately, I don't think that she can do it all and keep the building safe and secure. So I'm going to have Troy talk about that a little bit.
When we did the renovations of the two elementary buildings, they were designed purposefully to provide space for two office secretaries. And that afforded an opportunity to have somebody focus on the doorway and answering the phone and allowing entrance and exit of appropriate people, still having another secretary take care of all the everyday routines. Lab was renovated back in 1998. It's not, wasn't designed for two, so we continue to operate with one secretary. But again, as Jen mentioned, the demands of the doorway coming in and out of our building. And I appreciate the fact that we did add those secure doors, those three sets of doors, which helped to restrict access to the lobby area and the office, once gaining access and given permission to enter the building from outside. But with one person in that office, we're finding that the times that somebody has to go out to that front door to actually look at somebody's ID if they are new to our building and we have no knowledge as to why they're coming, even though we have the intercom system. The demands of assuring that we're allowing only those appropriate people coming into our building, plus the phone ringing, and the demands of somebody coming to the desk and all of that. We're finding, and we have the largest student population of all the elementary buildings, and we're just a high-demand office area. So to ensure the safety, that the calls are, Deb sometimes has three people on hold on the calls because she's dealing with the person buzzing in and the students coming and things like that. So we're just looking for efficiency and productivity in that office flow area to give the best customer service that we can to everybody, as well as ensuring that every step is taken, that access to the building and parts within are adhered to.
Okay. So other than that, along with that secretarial restructure, we are talking about the elimination of a 10-month secretary position at the high school. These duties will be molded into those of other secretaries at the high school, and I think Jared is going to speak to that a little bit.
I should have known better to sit right behind the podium. One of the nice things about the building project of the last year and a half to two years is that it allowed us not only to look at things like safety and security for our kids and the structure of our school, it also forced us to spend a lot of time talking about the staff necessary, not only to operate it now, but to operate it going forward. And one of those conversations that came up quite a lot, particularly in the design of the office space and the support spaces, was what we need to support the building internally. And a part of that review, especially as we look at our 10-month secretarial positions, we believe we have an opportunity as we move forward to shift some of those duties away from one place to another. Right now, we have some duties that are redundant. We have some that are clearly non-redundant. But with the redundancy that's in some of those duties, we have the capability right now to meet the need of our students while reducing that staffing load down slightly, which also would allow us, as we move into the new building in two years, to have the structure in place to support the office and the career center in the way in which we've designed it. Because we do have people placed in certain places throughout that structure. So that was why we made that recommendation that we did.
Okay. So beyond that, we will be complying with our support. Well, actually, in the budget, we have some assumptions of wage increases for our support staff. Please note that the support staff, their association contract expires June 30th, 2018, and is currently being negotiated. This is the third year in a row that I've been doing the budget, actually, second year in a row, I think. And each year, I have not had two contracts to budget with. So I'm budgeting without a support contract. Hopefully, we can get that settled and move along on our way so we can make sure our budget numbers are accurate. Please also note that throughout the upcoming months and into next year, we are going to be evaluating all special ed staffing to ensure proper supports are in place for the needs of our students while operating as efficiently as possible. Kathy had spoke to some of those ratios that you saw for, I believe it was autistic, one-to-one, with all of the, I don't know how many aides we have. I forget. A lot of aides, and so on. So we're going to take a hard look at that. We'll also be evaluating the transportation for some of our special needs kids. I think a lot of times, what was happening is we were throwing immediate solutions out to some of these students, creating one-on-one situations with transportation, which, as you know, is, it comes at a very high cost. We pulled back transportation from the IU a few, a year and a half or two back. And when I did the analysis on that, I was looking at what I was budgeting this year against what I was budgeting with the IU transportation two years ago. And we're now back to the same exact costs, only because we are adding a lot more students and some one-to-one transportation. So we're going to take a hard look at those services next year. Our busing contract is up. We will be doing an RFP for that contract. It is under, transportation in general is under scrutiny from the auditor general, so we want to make sure we comply with that, and we want to make sure we are getting the best service for the best possible price. Okay. Now on to the administrative staff structures and budget components. So as Tracy talked about earlier, we, one of our current instructional advisors is transitioning to be a professional staff member. She's still going to hold a similar role as a professional staff member, but she comes out of the administration staff and into the professional staff. The second instructional advisor currently under the administration staff will transition to an assistant director of exceptional children. Again, as Tracy and Jared had mentioned, the high school dean of students position is recommended to be eliminated and replaced with an additional assistant principal at the high school. Due to the resignation of our accounting manager in February of 18, this position has been eliminated and is being replaced with the assistant business manager, hopefully approved on our agenda tonight. And also, we are assuming a 3% wage increase for administration, although the current Act 93 agreement expires June 30th, 2018, and is currently under evaluation. And just as a comparison, in 2017-18, we had 23 administrative staff. In 2018-19, we are also budgeting for 23 administrative staff. Other preliminary budget components, when we talk about healthcare, and we are very lucky, and you will see further in this presentation, that our balance at LBT has grown a little bit because we've had some good claim years. We've had some changes contractually to our healthcare benefits that we provide to employees. That is going to allow us in 2018-19 to take a funding holiday. And what that means is we will not be paying one month of our benefit payment to LBT. Again, this is a one-time savings for next year. And hopefully, we continue to have good claim years to allow us to do it again. But it's going to save us approximately $530,000. Also, because of our good claim years that we had, and I, projections for this year are good, too. We are able to do a 0% increase in healthcare premiums for our employees. However, please note that the support staff negotiations are going on. So their premium share rates are still up for negotiations. So those could change, or they could not change, I'm not sure. But as far as the cost for the premiums for this year, they will not go up unless negotiated with the staff. When we talk PERS, our employee contribution rate, we saw an increase of 2.64% going from 2018 to 2019. 2017-18, our rate is 32.57%. And they just certified earlier this year, our 2018-19 rate as 33.43%. And of course, that 2.64% increase is compounded on top of salary increases. However, just a note, the 2018 certified rate came in lower than projected from where it would be last year, and that projection was at 34.18. And that's due to the economy increasing and better return on investments at PERS. So hopefully, that continues to happen, and we will see lower projected rates in the future. Also, in our preliminary budget, we are increasing the number of seats for York Adams Academy from 14 to 18. Our professional substitute rate will increase from $100 a day to $110 a day. And we will also be reintroducing the employee assistance program, which is essential to make sure we have the supports in place for our staff that they may need. I don't know if Christina wants to quick talk about that a little bit? Sorry, I put you on the spot. This one wasn't planned.
So employee assistance program is just really important for our employees and their families to have in times of need. It can be for emotional support, it can be for mental support. A lot of the employee assistance programs also have other functions, such as the ability to help people with adoption, lawyer fees. They actually even can help with employees' sons and daughters who need help with like education and tutoring and things like that, to at least get them to that bridge of where they can go next. And so, but ultimately, it's really around when those employees need that quick call. They don't have time to make an appointment, to reach out to a counselor or anything like that. It's a quick ability for our employees to have that lifeline to do that. We really found a benefit in having the employee assistance program here back in the fall when we... when we unfortunately had that tragedy at the intermediate school with one of our students. And a lot of times, what you find is, we had them on site, but a lot of times, the effects of things don't happen until afterwards. And so, having an employee assistance program allows them, when they're struggling two weeks later, to have that ability to have someone to call and reach out to.
Also included in our preliminary budget component is intermediate school department. I'm going to have Mrs. Gross talk about this a little bit, as she is very passionate about this.
In order to do anything curricularly, I need content-specific people who know what they're doing, who know their content, to help me lead the building forward. So, with department heads, I'll be looking at someone in the math department, ELA, social studies, science, and special ed. And what I will do is meet with these, with this group weekly. We'll come together, we'll talk about content, we'll talk about assessment, PSAs. So, it is the broadband for us moving the IS forward curricularly. I've been doing it now, Terry and I, trying to do it by ourselves. It's been a struggle, I'll be honest with you. We've done the best that we can do, but I need to have a team of teachers who are working with Terry and I weekly, and looking at the curriculum and our students' needs, to drive it forward. I'm very passionate about our department chairs. They are the instructional leaders, and they are going to drive us forward. Thank you.
Next on the list is a full-size iPad initiative, and I'm going to have Mrs. Kroom and Mr. Papa kind of explain how that will work and the need, I believe, for the new iPads.
So, a couple of years ago, when the district committed to the one-to-one with the mini iPads, that was the perfect choice at the time. In the last two, three years, what we've learned is, the mini iPads are very limited. We are, and at the time, grades five to 12 had, were right, one-to-one mini iPads. So, what we have found is, you can't take our MAP assessment on it, you can't take the state assessment on it. On a full-size iPad, you can take the PSA, you can take the Keystone, you can take MAP, and just the number of apps. It's just more robust. So, Dom, do you want to come on up and talk financially, how we're going to do this? We can sell the minis, get money back, and go from there.
Yeah. The plan is to go full-size iPads, third through 12.
Yeah, grades three and four.
So, adding the three and fourth grade, third and fourth graders. And looking at last year's budget, along with Jen, we took six hours on a Friday to go through that. There's a way we can resell the mini iPads this year and get either their, then they came in, they have to grade them, A through F. And because we always had cases on our iPads, they graded them at $75 and $60 apiece, if they want to purchase it. I got a, I have a 2,260 iPads we're going to sell. We already have a guaranteed of $140,000 to purchase the 2,260. With the resale of the mini iPads, we could pretty much stay at our same budget we had last year, and not increase the technology budget. And this is a great year to do this, because our mini iPads are Gen 2s, or Mini 2s. They started out at iOS, which is the iPhone, or the iPhone it started out. Now, it's iPad operating system. They started out at nine, we're at 11, and it's going to be very close, where we don't know, if Apple comes out with iOS 12, you may not be able to load that newer OS on the iPads that we have. So, this is a good year to do this, to update our iPads. The second, right now, with the testing, what Tracy mentioned, we basically have to spend close to 10 to 15 hours a week fixing the laptops at the schools for the students to do the testing that we're doing. And we're trying to, we're, we can't add any more to that. I mean, the laptops are six, seven years old, so it's taken a lot of manpower to keep them operational.
And one of the things I want to add, too, is, in May, when the teachers have their instructional strategies training, this summer, we'll be working with a group of teachers to determine the expectations of what the teachers will, they will have expectations of how they use these instructional strategies and how they align with the iPads. So, there will be expectations in the iPad juice. So, if you're not seeing a lot of use with your kids now, you absolutely see it next year, because there will be expectations in every single classroom for iPad juice. So, this is the perfect time to kind of upgrade and move the instructional program, the curriculum, and the technology forward as one package into next school year.
What's the significance of the $280,000 there? I guess I wasn't quite sure with that.
Okay. So, that $280,000 is actually going to be what costs?
That's the cost of the lease.
That's the cost of the lease per year. Currently, what we were able to do in working some savings in this year, and looking at our lease structure for next year, this year, we were able to pay off two of our leases that we currently have with the iPad minis. And next year, the cost of the lease that we had in place, we can pretty much pay that existing lease off with the sale of the mini iPads. So, it buys itself out. So, this $280,000, although that looks like a big number, it's actually keeping our budget the same next year for technology, because we're, we were able to offset with some of those other initiatives. Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Okay. So, next preliminary budget component, we are going to increase the services of public communications, social-emotional support student resources, including professional development for professionals, and community outreach services. This $30,000, I know that looks like a big number, that includes $10,000 for publications to be mailed out to residents. With the Act 34 hearing, we heard the community's response, and that, you know, they like to receive news from the district, and not everybody gets the newspaper, not everyone can go online. So, that cost includes the cost of mailings to the community. So, whether we want to do a newsletter, or any type of publication, we can do it with $10,000 out of that $30,000. I'm going to allow Brad to talk a little bit about the public communication piece. Before, we had no budget for public communications, or for our social worker, they were just budgeted at their salary. So, they came in and had no resources for what they need to do as administrators. So, I'm going to allow Brad to talk a little bit about public communications.
Like Jen said, I've had no budget, so we're putting in a budget this year, which, like she said, one of the biggest components is for the mailings. When we looked at the Act 34 mailing, we spent about $5,000 for that mailing, and that was something that was not budgeted for. So, along these lines, we'll be able to track that a lot better, and we'll finally have a budget to do some PR stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Unfortunately, Kirsten is sick today, so she was unable to come in and talk about the social-emotional student resources. As Kathy had mentioned, our students are coming to us with very high emotional need. So, do you want to just touch on that a little bit?
Just things that we've talked about for next year, because Kirsten and I have worked very closely together this year, and she's also been working a lot with our school counselors on how to move programs forward. One of the things she's going to be focusing on next year, especially at the secondary level, is trauma-informed care, because we really have to make sure that our teachers, everyone working with our students is really prepared to understand how to talk to students when they're struggling. And you can't do that without having resources. So, therefore, that's, some of the budget is to allow resources for the professionals. But also, at the elementary level, there's a need to develop more resources for small groups and things like that. The Kirsten is working with the counselors to develop.
So, that concludes the components of the preliminary budget. Anything else would be pretty much a roll forward, a cost double, or to roll forward the budget into next year. We just wanted to be, make sure we were transparent of all the changes that are included in the preliminary budget. So, this is a summary. So, currently, I am projecting our opening general fund balance, July 1st, 2018, to be approximately $14.9 million. The preliminary budgeted revenues at this point are sitting at $61.5 million, giving us available resources for the 2018-19 fiscal year of $76.4 million. The expenditure budget for the 18-19 school year currently sits at $63.9 million, giving us projected ending general fund balance at $630,19 of $12,460,000, leaving a 2018-19 budget deficit of $2.4 million. Please note, it is very important that this presented information is preliminary. Again, over the upcoming month, it can, it's going to be refined as new information comes available, particularly in the area of revenue estimates. In this current budget, we put state subsidies based on 17-18 funding levels, and I'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation about the tax revenue that we inserted into the preliminary budget. So, as far as managing and controlling fund balance levels throughout the budgeting process, the general fund, fund balance will need to be used to offset some of our 18-19 expenditures. Also, in our budget, preliminary budget, we are proposing the usage of approximately $1 million in revenues from the capital project fund, and they are reflected in the budget as an offset of debt service, as the district embarks on financing the construction of the new high school. As you may recall, in many of Ken Phillips' presentations, he presented the millage phase-in, and what that included was a $6 million cash contribution to the project. And that $6 million is phased into, into the financing over a few years. Next year, again, it would be $1 million that we would be putting towards our debt service payments for next year. Okay. So, I want to just take a look back, and you, this may look familiar to you, as far as our 16-17 fund balances and what they consisted of. So, our non-spendable fund balance at the end of 2017 was $3.8 million. And as I talked about earlier, how we are going to take a funding holiday, that balance allows us to do so, and we can do it in compliance with the Lincoln Benefit Trust. That's where we'll save about $530,000 next year. As far as committed fund balance goes, last year, when we received our PlanCon funds, we decided that we would commit some of those PlanCon funds, approximately $1.4 million, to the PESR's line item to bridge the deficit gap for 17-18 budget, leaving our PESR's fund balance at $5.2 million. We had $500,000 committed for technology, $907,000 for medical costs, $2.4 million for debt principal. At the end of last fiscal year, we had assigned $2.1 million to capital projects. We then, in November or December, I think it was November of last year, we moved that $2.1 million over to the capital project fund, again, to help offset the cost of the project and for that $6 million cash contribution. And under unassigned, we had $4 million. So, at the end of 17, our total general fund, fund balance was $19.1 million. Our capital project fund balance sat at $10.1 million, leaving us a total fund balance of $29.3 million. So, when we move forward, and we look at 17-18 and 18-19, okay, so, the non-spendable fund balance, you'll see projected 2019 to go down to $3.3 million because of the funding holiday. The retirement, at the end of 19, we are projecting to use the 3 million, or some of the 3 million, 5 million retirement commitment that we made at the end of last year, we'll use that for this year's deficit, taking us to $3.1 million at the end of 18. And then, to help fund some of the deficit for 2019, that commitment will go down to $925,000. Because of our technology initiative, we will utilize some of the technology funds, which we haven't touched in years, for the $280,000, taking our fund balance in that committed area to $220,000. Medical costs will stay the same, the debt principal commitment will stay the same, the capital reserves, again, we moved that money over to capital projects, and then the unassigned will stay the same. So, at the end of 2019, your fund balance goes down to $23.1 million. So, this takes a look at some of our fund balance history. You can see, I think you've seen this slide before, in 2011, we were probably about $12, $13 million. And because of all the surpluses that I noted in the first slide tonight, I know that was a while ago, we raised our fund balance up to almost $18, $19 million. In 2015, and 2016 is the year that we first started moving some funds over to our capital project fund, so we can help fund the new project. That's why they dipped down to $16 million. And then, 17, as we had the large surplus from receiving the back payment of the PlanCon projects, that balance grew again. We moved those funds back out in 2017-18, and then we'll start to dwindle down that fund balance to get the budget deficit. Capital projects fund, fund balance, you'll see 2011 looked very high. That was the tail end of the Dover Elementary admin building project, so a lot of those funds had yet to be paid out to the contractors, so they were sitting in our capital projects fund. So, 2012 is more realistic view of our fund balance. As you can see, it started to dip down 13, 14, 15, as we finished that project out and did some other capital improvements within the district. In 2016 is where we moved the money from the capital projects, or from the general fund, over to capital projects fund, and so, it's growing. In 2019, you'll see it bumped down a little bit, because we are taking that $1 million, moving it back to the general fund to offset our debt service payments for the new bond issue for the project. PESR's employer contribution rates, you all have seen this table many, many times. I just want to revisit, in 2008-9, our PESR's rate was, PESR's contribution rate was 4.76. 18-19, it's going to be at 33.43. So, we've kind of hit that spike. We're starting to level out a little bit. Hopefully, again, the economy will be nice to us, and maybe drive those rates down a little bit. And this is just a slide to show you the steep increase in the rates. Okay. So, through the preliminary budget that we presented, it includes a 1.23% tax increase. That is equal to 2.27 mils. These mils are being put in place to phase-in millage, to assist in funding future capital projects, while also utilizing reserved funds, which were set aside for this process, for this purpose. Again, if you would remember, some of Ken Phillips' presentations from RBC, that is the amount of mils that are required to start to phase-in over the next 10 years, the millage we need to fund the project. So, currently, we are sitting at 21.934 mils. With the preliminary budget, we'll be at 22.204 mils, and what that gave us was $353,000 in addition to revenue, and that money will be used for debt service payment for the new project. And then, I wanted to also give you a picture of where other increases might, how much other revenue increases would generate for the district, maybe to offset some of that $2.4 million deficit. So, if you would go up to 1.5%, in addition to the 353, you'd see about $70,000 extra revenue. And then, if you go up to the index of 3.2, you would have about $560,000 of additional revenue to offset the $2.4 million deficit that we have in place in the preliminary budget currently. What does that mean for the average taxpayer? The average tax bill on our 0.27 mil increase, their bill would go up approximately $32 for the year. And if you would raise- And if you would raise taxes to the index, the bill would go up approximately $84 for the year. So this is our four-year look back as far as millage rates go. In 2014-15, the district had raised taxes 2.1% to get to the millage rate that we have currently of 21.934. And over the last three years, the district has not raised taxes, putting us in the lower quartile of the districts in York County. The red arrows there, if you go to the index, this is where we would fall if no other districts increased or decreased taxes for next year. We would be right here on the index. And if we only go up to the 0.27 mils that is currently in the preliminary budget, we will fall right here, one step above where we are currently. And again, that's only if no other district raises taxes for next year. So again, in the preliminary budget, you know, we've had a three-year tax increase, or tax freeze, and in '16-17, we actually decreased taxes because of the elimination of the per capita tax. Here again, just a reminder of the preliminary budget summary, the $2.4 million deficit. So what are our next steps? Our next steps, in accordance with our budget timeline, what will happen is the administration will continue to monitor the budget and make adjustments as components change, whether they be revenues or expenditures. The administration will continue to the evaluation of IU Special Education Services and staffing, including transportation. We would like the board to provide us some direction as to the elements included in this preliminary budget and not included in regards to expenditures and tax revenues. The preliminary budget will then be on the April voting agenda for release, for public inspection. And prior to that vote, we will do another small presentation to let you know of any changes that have occurred over the past month. And then April through May, we will continue to review and monitor changes for final budget adoption in May. Questions or comments?
One question I have, Lincoln Benefits Trust.
We should have done that first.
Look at the girls' faces. More than they ever wanted to know.
Lincoln Benefits Trust, that amount between 3.8 and 3.2 you're projecting in there. Do we have guidelines that we need to fall between, based on number of employees, or how's that work? What are the guidelines that, what kind of leeway do we have on that?
So it's a specific percentage that you have to carry in the LBT policy. There's a specific, like, number of claim payments that you have to be able to make as far as what balance you have to have there. So I think our, I think our required balance there might be at like $2.5 million. We're at 3.8 right now, so we want to make sure that we are not hoarding money at the LBT. We want to make sure that we're being cognizant of what we have there and not let reserves climb too far up. One of the issues that I have with the IU, for example, is their LBT balance is extremely high. And I often bring that up at our business managers' meetings because I feel that, and it might be at like $14 million. I feel it's too high. And we all continue to watch each other, and theirs impacts our budget, actually. So I just want to make sure we don't get to that point. I think right now, with a good claim year we're having, we could climb up to $4 million easily there. So that's the reason that we are able to take the funding holiday.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we have concluded Category 2 of 21. I promise you will be out of here before tomorrow.
Nate, our computers are not working all of a sudden, so we're not signed on anymore. Dom, if you could help us out.
They quit at 8 o'clock, so. Is it okay if our student representatives do that thing? Okay, before we begin that, you may have noticed Mrs. Krum and I whispering at one point over here because we got some late-breaking news tonight. In an email, that there is a national writing program called the Scholastic Writing Awards, and we received word that Ms. Sophie Barnes is a silver medalist in the poetry category. Congratulations, Sophie. With that, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wassler, just heads up, Sarah and I both agreed that we could go for some Girl Scout cookies after that, so.
What kind do you want there, in the back of my car?
Peanut butter ones. Okay, so I'll start with elementary schools. For Dover Elementary on April 4th, the PTO will kick off the PSSA excitement with an afternoon of fun activities for the 3rd through 6th graders. Students will be able to enjoy movies, music, food, and a variety of other activities. This will give the students a chance to decompress from all the hard work and get ready for the start of the exams. On April 5th, our kindergarten through 2nd graders will go to experience a morning of critters. The PTO has sponsored a hands-on interactive assembly where a variety of insects and small animals will be in the spotlight. It is sure to captivate our younger students as they get the chance to handle these creatures. On April 9th, the Dover Elementary staff will hold a PSSA pep rally to get the students pumped up for the exam. PSSA exams will be administered the weeks of April 9th, 16th, and 23rd. ELA is the first week, followed by math, and concluding with 4th grade science. For Live Elementary, Live's 6th grade students will spend the day at JA BizTown on Friday, March 23rd. Several weeks of curriculum are delivered, and students experience money management, resume writing, and interviewing. The experience culminates in spending the day at BizTown, where students create a community and run businesses. On Friday, March 16th, Live hosted officers from Northern York County Regional Police Department for an appreciation luncheon. Students visited with the officers and presented them with cards. The PTO provided a snack/gift basket to be taken back to the station. On Friday, tomorrow, Live is celebrating our students with a PBIS/Proud Quarterly Reward, popcorn and a movie. Live will do their PSSA pep rally on Friday, April 16th, and the Eagles on the Run program will begin on April 3rd, and that will run through May 10th. Live, PTO parents and staff members, along with secondary students from Dover, will help facilitate the program for several Live students in grades 4 through 6, focusing on leadership, healthy lifestyles, character building, and building self-esteem and confidence. Daily exercise and running will enhance the program. For North Salem, their annual talent show will be held tomorrow, beginning at 6:00 at the Dover High School. Please come out and support the talented students. On Monday, March 16th, we will be recognizing those students who have received the Soaring Eagles Award with a pizza luncheon and a certificate signed by Representative Seth Grove. North Salem is gearing up for the PSSA assessments and will be holding a pep rally for all students on Monday, April 9th, to inspire our students to give their very best effort. And Wagglestown has no specific updates, but I'm sure great things are happening over there.
She's been ill, so she's had a rough week.
So from the intermediate school, Pennies for Patients fundraiser was held on February 26th through March 16th. An assembly will be helped, or, I don't know, on Friday, March 23rd, to reveal and celebrate the total amount raised for leukemia patients. Clubs were held on March 5th and March 21st. On March 8th, the Showcase of the Stars event was held. Art, Technology, Education, Family and Consumer Science, Social Studies, and Language Arts student projects were displayed throughout the main hallway and cafeteria. Intermediate school musicians and vocalists provided entertainment as guests viewed the student projects and watched and participated in judo demonstrations in the gymnasium. On March 9th, students participated in an assembly hosted by the Susan Burns Organization of the topic "Heroin: The Wake-Up Call." Students learned about the dangers of opioid abuse. The IS students participated in the National School Walkout. The walkout commemorated the one-month anniversary of the shooting at Major E. Stoneman Douglas High School on Parkland, Florida. IS students honored the 17 students and adults who lost their lives on February 14th. The IS staff will be enjoying delicious beverages prepared by the high school's Class Act Beverage Entrepreneurship on March 23rd. Proud celebration will take place on March 29th. From the Dover High School, Lexi Lunsford and Casey Norris were selected to have their plays performed at the Apple Center. These students submitted their plays as a part of the high school playwriting competition. The plays will be performed in a showcase at the Apple Center later this spring. Judd Picano competed at the PIAA State Diving Championships last week. Judd qualified for semifinals, falling just short of qualifying for the final round. Congratulations to Judd on a great season. Matt Rodriguez competed in the PIAAA State Wrestling Championships in Hertsey. Congratulations to Matt on a great season. The Resurgence Team started its work in improving school culture. They held a pop-up pizza party, facilitated a surprise positive post-it posting, and started developing their plans for the end of the school year to engage and involve more students. And lastly, the high school will hold its faculty talent show next week as a PBIS reward. Faculty acts will be sharing their talents for students who have been recognized for positive academic performance, consistent positive behaviors, and consistent attendance.
Okay, any questions from our board members?
I was just wondering about the talent show at North Salem. I was just wondering if, I thought I saw something where there might have been a change in date.
That was published before the weather happened. Our talent show will now be on Friday, April 6th. Our students just simply didn't have enough time to rehearse ahead of time. So Friday, April 6th, at the high school.
Any other questions? Okay, ladies, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have our public comment period. Is there anybody for public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Board President's communication. First, I did want to thank everybody in the room here tonight for all of your hard work on this budget process. I know it's not fun. There's probably only one person in this room that enjoys the numbers stuff. So thank you again for all of your work and the efforts you've put into that. We do appreciate that. We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss some personnel and budget matters that have come up, as well as for our solicitor to provide us with an update on the Washington Township situation. And we do have, just for your information, one item that has been removed from tonight's agenda, and that was for some potential salary adjustments at the administrative level. These have been postponed until next month's meeting at this time. So with that, we will move on to the LIU board election. All of you should have received a ballot from Mrs. Benko tonight. If you would please take your time to vote for Mr. DeSho on that first category there. Provide these back to Mrs. Benko now. I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the February 20th, 2018 board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko? Motion carries. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the February 22nd, 2018 board committee meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko?
Could you please all vote again? Didn't work? Okay. Can we voice vote on that, please?
I hit the change vote button up there.
Hit the change vote in the right-hand corner. It's red. I apologize. I hit the button before everyone was done. Mr. Rauscher, do you have a red button up top of the screen?
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
And the motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Again, we'll go through this category by category for any questions or discussion. So we will begin with the curriculum and professional development area. Anything on the two items that are part of consent there? Hearing none, we'll move on to human and fiscal resources. Any questions on the items in that category?
Wanted to make a comment there about the, on the donations. There are several donations that have been received. One of them, again, related to our student lunches from administrative staff here took up a donation and helped out Wagglestown. So many thanks to those who participated with that.
Any other questions or comments on that category? Okay, hearing none, the Capital Improvement Steering Committee. Any questions on the one item there? Okay. I don't believe we have anything else. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Benko? And the motion carries. Okay, next we'll move back to the items that require individual votes. So we will go back to Category 7, under Curriculum and Professional Development. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the adjudication of the March 2nd, 2018 hearing for student A.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? I did want to thank Mr. Emig, Mr. DeLauder, and Mr. DeSho for joining me in the process of these hearings. They are not pleasant to have to go through and sit through, and I want to thank them for giving up their time for a day to go through that. So if there's no other questions or discussions, Mrs. Benko? Motion carries. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the adjudication of the March 2nd, 2018 hearing for student B.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko? And the motion carries. And next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the adjudication of the March 2nd, 2018 hearing for student C.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Mrs. Benko? And the motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the Human and Fiscal Resources category. Job Descriptions 805. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the job descriptions attached to our agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? I will be abstaining from this vote because it does impact a family member. I will be abstaining from this vote because it does impact a family member.
Mr. Raucher, I'm waiting on your vote.
I must have went to the wrong place when I pushed it. How was that?
And the motion carries. Okay, next I'd like to entertain a motion to approve an additional school resource officer to be provided by Northern York Regional Police Department for the remainder of the 2017-18 school year, pending the receipt of donated funds through fundraising efforts of Chuck Reinert, owner of Chuck's Auto Salvage. We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? And the motion carries. I'm going to skip down to the last vote that we need to make. That is 11:02, the York Adams Academy. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the York Adams Academy 2018-19 general operating budget.
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? And the motion carries. Okay, we'll go back up to 10, the Dover Eagle Foundation for any reports or comments. I do not have anything additional at this time. Mrs. Kroom, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nothing.
Okay, York Adams Academy. Mr. Emig, did you have anything else to add for that?
No.
Okay. York County School of Technology, Mr. Delauter.
Nothing to report.
LIU Special Education, Mr. DeShoe, Mrs. Kroom, Mrs. Benko.
Nothing to report.
Legislative, Mr. Raucher.
Yes, I had brought up last month, and I forgot to say something in the executive session, about the ESA voucher. There's over 100 schools that I voted no, and it said if your school district didn't vote, it'd be nice if you would vote and send in support to, against the vouchers, because it figured it'd take $500 million out of the education budget. And that's the only report I have. I just.
Questions or discussion? Okay, York Learning Center, Mr. Raucher again.
We'll meet next week.
PSBA, Mrs. Brenton.
Nothing new to report, although I think Jen and Mrs. Kroom had attended the roundtable.
We attended the roundtable. It was a nice discussion on the status of the state budget. They provided us analysis of different costs, transportation, special education, basic ed, how the, you know, funding formula works and things like that. So it was a nice evening that we had up in Mechanicsburg, and we look forward to future roundtables to collaborate with other board members and administrators within the area.
Thank you. Dover Industrial Development Committee, Mrs. Herman.
No report.
Superintendent's Report, Mrs. Kroom.
Nothing much tonight, except I just wanted to share that we are going to take about a week to take a look at making sure our minutes and our days are right. And then after the Easter break, we will communicate out the last day of school and what graduation looks like and what we need to do. Quite frankly, I just would like to get through next week with no snow and don't want to jump the gun a little bit. So, but we also need to make sure that we're compliant with the state. So we will have more information after the Easter break.
Any questions for Mrs. Kroom? Okay, miscellaneous, any other comments or observations from our board members tonight?
Yeah, I have a couple. I just wanted to take a minute to welcome our new employees that we've just approved and to the district and wish all of them well. And also wanted to take a minute to say thank you to those who have served the district and who have chosen to go elsewhere for various reasons. So thank you for all those who have served the district well as, as well. And also wanted to take time to thank Mrs. Oswalt in the Life Skills class, who hosted a luncheon this week and invited us to come in. It was very nice to go in and see the Life Skills class and the students, hard at work. It was a great, great meal, so thank you to her and her class.
Anybody else?
I wanted to follow up to, with Mr. Delauter, mock trial. I understand things went well for the mock trial since our last, what, I think they ended up second, taking second?
Yeah, they, they advanced to the final round and ended up placing second to Spring Grove, which is like the perennial, and they win like every single year with, and they entered like four teams. At the end of the trial, it was a split decision by the jury, a 3-2 vote for Spring Grove, and they lost by a total of five points. So it was a tremendous, and like I said before, I don't know how they do it, they get there in front of an actual judge, and like I said, the attorneys are, I'm sorry, the jury are actual attorneys. Yeah, just, it was amazing to watch the students, their ways, and just the professionalism that they did. They represented Dover very well.
And then I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
The, I just wanted to say congratulations to the high school. The musical was phenomenal. They did a great job, everybody. My little, a little friend of mine who has a little girl in first grade, I've never seen such a big, biggest smile as I've seen on her face that night. It was just so cool to see. So just wanted to say congratulations on another job with them.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll come up on our last public comment period. Anybody for public comment here at the end? I remind you that this is a two-minute period.
I'm sure I'll use all two minutes. Since you heard from every other administrator tonight, I figured it was my turn to come on up. Thank you, Jen, I appreciate that. No, I just wanted to draw your attention to the totem poles that are throughout the building.
In case you haven't seen them falling all over.
Yes, yes. This was a cross-curricular project between our 5th grade social studies teacher, Mrs. Gutschall, our 5th grade ELA teacher, Mrs. Davis, as well as our art teacher, Mrs. Dashu. And each of the 5th grade students then wrote a piece related to their totem pole. So I just wanted to make sure we got to see that.
And they will be joining us next month with the weather. We couldn't kind of wrangle them around for tonight, so.
Student council.
Our student council's coming next month.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we'll move on to our future meeting announcements. Our next meeting will be our Board Action Meeting on April 17th at 7:00 p.m. Board Committee Meetings will be April 19th at 6:00, and our planning meeting, April 19th at 7:00. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? We're adjourned, thank you.